Hello, Alana. Yes.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Rocco.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Protem Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Bowman. Councilmember Farrelittle. Councilmember Galumbek.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Okay.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
And Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
For Miss President.
And in respect to Councilmember Bowman, it was, since it is public information, his morning, the passing of his dad. So he will be able, because these proceedings are recorded, he will be able to look back if he is not on, if the public sees that he is not on, so. Um. A motion to reconvene the committee as a whole. By our Majority Leader, second by Councilmember Noakowski. Um, we are now, and again, we are in our hearings, and next week, we will be in our workshop. And just for those who may be just joining us, the public meeting has been moved to next Monday, May the 10th at 5:00 PM, so that the public has time to review the budget. We have before us today, the Mayor and Executive Department, Commissioner Estridge and Brendan Mahaffey. I believe, yes, I see him. If you all will tell us who's here today.
Oh, good morning or good afternoon. Hi, we have Oswald Mestry. Services and Bob Proctor here. We have Brendan Mahaffey, OSP Director. We have Lisa Hicks, the Director of.
Development.
The thing, the development. Oh, my gosh. Director of Real Estate.
Hope, Hope Young Watkins.
Young Watkins. My coffee.
And Nadine Marrero, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Sorry, I didn't see you come in. I beg your pardon.
Okay, now, I do have on a bowtie, because last year, Oswald Mestry had on his bowtie. And he wore it because he expected me to wear mine. I remembered, so as I got dressed this morning, I put it on.
Thank you, Council President.
Yes, sir. All right, whoever is speaking to represent the group.
Um, I will start with the Mayor's Office. Uh, you know, the Executive Office, there was really no changes in the Mayor's Office. Um, personnel is the same, and pretty much expenditures are the same also for thirty years.
Okay. Thank you. Next. Oh, Councilmember, Councilmember Noakowski, if we can go around to all the departments, if you'd be all right with that, and then we'll come back with the. All right, next department?
Uh, Brendan Mahaffey, Executive Director, Mayor's Office of Strategic Planning. Uh, there was, uh, for the budget that we have for, um, the Division of Planning and Zoning, there was an Assistant Director, uh, of Planning that was added. Um, and that speaks to really the effort that we're making to increase planning this year. Uh, in particular, coordinating, uh, with the various departments within City Hall and outside city government as well. Uh, so from a capacity perspective, we felt that we needed that Assistant Director, uh, as Nadine Marrero, uh, in particular, has been focusing quite a bit as well on the boards, uh, which take up a lot of time, obviously, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Historic Preservation Board. Uh, so that is the change there. There are additional planners. If you're looking at last year's budget versus this year's budget, you'll see there are additional planners. The council actually approved those planners of the October, November. So they're not really new to the budget, but they are new to this budget, if you're just looking from last year's budget to this year's budget, um, in terms of those planners, but those were already approved by the common council. Uh, then in the Division of Development, um, that's led by, uh, Lisa Hicks, who's the Director of Development. There are no changes, um, of any note, um, there, uh, in the Division of Development. And then for, uh, the Division of Real Estate, there's a few title changes, uh, that we have in there, um, to really reflect what the Division of Real Estate is, um, doing, uh, at this moment in time, uh, with, uh, with our inventory, uh, Hope Young Watkins, Director of Real Estate, oversees, uh, the sale of capital assets, oversees, uh, the HGH program, the Homegrown Program, uh, as we call it, which, uh, which is, uh, uh, is still in its infancy. Um, so we've made some adjustments, uh, to address these new programs and also the inventory, uh, that we have, uh, in the, the, the city of Buffalo. Uh, Hope Young Watkins, Director, Hope Young Watkins has done a great job of doing a deep dive, uh, to making sure that the, the staffing that she has fits and the equipment that she has fits the needs, uh, that she has, uh, today. So that's a quick, uh, overview of, uh, the, uh, three divisions that were, are, are within the Mayor's Office of Strategic Planning.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Um. Good morning, members, and, um, good morning, Council President. I see that we can be on GQ together. Uh, but you first. Um, I represent the Division of, um, Citizen Services as its, um, Director. Um, the Division of Citizen Services was created in an executive department established as centralized computer-based system. As you know it, as our 3-1-1 Call and Resolution Center, um, we strive to make sure that we are taking inquiries, but also public facing as the door to City Hall. Um, this year, we were challenged as all departments with the pandemic. Um, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to our 3-1-1 call takers. Um, they are the front line and, um, can't say enough about, um, during the pandemic that we transitioned to, um, um, working from home, more so than any in terms of other departments, I know everyone else did. But it was a transition. We, um, have been kind of the model of the nation in terms of how we transitioned within forty-eight hours. Um, again, want to thank Bob and all of the staff there. But besides doing our 3-1-1, we also do engagement programs, working with block clubs and community-based agencies. We've been doing a weekly block chat to make sure that we are communicating with neighborhood groups and organizations to push information out. Um, we have also been, again, engaging with, uh, a premier AmeriCorps Vista program. You can't say enough about our AmeriCorps members who are embedded in various departments here. Um, we, um, present the budget along with, um, Commissioner Estridge and are awaiting any particular questions you may have.
Thank you. Is that all the departments?
Yeah.
All right.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, there's also the Communications Department. There's only personnel, and there was only a switch from, um, City Stat Analyst was changed to a Knowledge-Based Coordinator. That person is to help with Communications, MIS, and, um, Citizen Services, keep up to date on all changes.
Great. All right, thank you very much. Um, Councilmember Noakowski, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two questions for Commissioner Estridge. The first is, on page forty, under Advertising, I see a jump in the Advertising line. And I just wanted to know, what does that include?
Um, a lot of that is advertising for RSPs and. We have to go through newspapers. They're very expensive.
Okay, thank you.
We also have to advertise for, uh, through assessment and the In-Rem process.
Thank you, that makes sense. Um, and then the.
Because of the paper, it has to be, uh, publicly recognized, well-known, recognized in the sense of advertising.
Thank you. And then this one is just a little bit more of an, uh, you know, a larger question, just in general, is, currently budgetarily, we are filling the shortfalls in our budget by stimulus, you know, filling it by stimulus right now due to COVID. And in previous budgets, we utilized debt borrowing to fill the shortfalls. So looking years ahead, how do we make up these shortfalls and not face a budget crisis in the coming year?
Um, we're looking at growth in our revenues. We look at sales tax, which has rebounded. And we can expect that to continue to rebound. Our state aid is, uh, come back again. We got an extra fifty million there, thirty-two million, really. And looking forward to the state being, um, rebounding also, and maybe some growth in out years with that. We have parking this year is very low, as we've mentioned. Um, their revenues at this point have not rebounded, so we also anticipate those will increase.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Council President. Um, and, and also thank you to Donna, Commissioner Estridge, and, and your team, everyone around the table. Uh, my screen isn't big enough for me to see everyone, so I can't make out who's out there. But I think that is Brendan Mahaffey. And I think that is Oswald Mestry. And, uh, someone hiding behind Brendan, but I believe we also. Who is that? Hello, hello. And then, of course, Ms. Hope Watkins, who is very helpful and responsive. Who's sitting across from you, Ms. Watkins?
Director Nadine Marrero.
Oh, that's Nadine. Hi, Nadine. Okay. Uh, with all that said, I'm going to say, thank you to Donna for allowing your team to be so available, and also attentive to assisting me with understanding the fluctuations and the changes, uh, in our, in our budget. Again, like I said before, we spent several hours, uh, trying to get explanations on things that I felt, uh, needed explaining. And, uh, one of the things, uh, that I wanted clarity on, that I forgot to ask your, uh, very capable staff, uh, Ms. Jessica Brown, who was there, I think everyone's been seeing her all morning, but didn't know who that was behind the black mask. Is that Jessica? Okay, it is her. All right, so, um, one of the questions I did ask was, the positions that will be added to administer the, the American Rescue Plan money, the stimulus money, are those positions in this budget?
I did two but, two positions in my budget, in Administration and Finance. Those are the Grant Resiliency Managers. So they are included in my budget.
Okay. And they'll be paid through the stimulus money?
That'll be part of it, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera? You're on mute, sir.
Uh, Donna, and the, uh, the two positions that we just talked about, they're being funded in this year's budget, although there's stimulus, what happens when the stimulus money runs out? Uh, why didn't we just fund them directly from stimulus and they would be there for the duration of the funds?
Well, I think at this time, we would look, the stimulus we're going to have for two to three years. So we would look at the positions, they are grant positions, so the anticipation is they also would work once the stimulus drops off. There would be other opportunities for them to receive grants.
Okay, so you're basically. Yeah, basically creating. We're creating more positions that are probably going to be around after stimulus, um, versus just paying them directly out of stimulus. That's always a concern when we're adding more positions. Uh, at, at this time, I'm still concerned about the out years in this budget. I mean, uh, there's a little comfort right now because of the rescue plan. However, uh, if we look at our patterns over the last years, uh, they haven't come in as we predicted. So that is a concern, adding more positions, new positions, um, instead of just funding it directly from stimulus. Thank you.
These will be union positions also, so we are, um, kind of covered under the union contract, so we would need to keep them, once again, if somebody left position, left city employment. And we didn't feel we needed them anymore, we obviously would not rehire a person.
All right. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Director, um, Mestry, want to talk to you. I know that due to pandemic, of course, we didn't have clean sweeps. Are we looking to redo, we begin doing clean sweeps as we get through the pandemic?
Uh, Councilman, thank you for that. Thank you for that, um, question. We are looking to reestablish clean sweeps. Last season, um, or last year was, um, pretty historic in terms of, uh, what occurred, not just in the nation, but within the city of Buffalo. We did attempt to do, um, a modified clean sweeps, but we did not get a chance to do as many. And so we saw the need, we converted because of the pandemic to make sure that we were able to talk to residents about pandemic needs and making sure that we created the Mayor's, um, Good Neighbors Network, where we were able to communicate with people and also use the existing network of block clubs and community-based agencies, make sure that we had information. So to answer your question in the short form, get ready, we are doing clean sweeps. We're working with, um, OSP, we're also working with Harvard University. It's going to be helping, um, doing a study, um, about the effectiveness. We've been doing clean sweeps, um, since I've been in City Hall, which has probably been only a year or two. Um, but, um, we, um, we want to make sure that we are engaging residents in a restorative approach, in the data-driven approach, and also making sure that we're looking at equity when we're trying to help deliver services too. So thank you very much.
So when, um, when do you think that you might begin? I mean, I know right now, with everything being up in the, in the air, and things are changing rather rapidly, um, but all the different protocols, um, seem to be, you know, slowing down. Um, do you think that it would be something that would be done this year, or maybe are we looking at next year possibly?
We are looking at this year. Um, I would probably say stay tuned. You should be receiving a, a memo from me, um, probably within the next week or two. And so we want to be able to engage, um, in the community probably within, you know, at least thirty days from now. So we're putting all of the pieces together. Obviously, we're in flux because, um, you know, following either the governor's recommendations, or when we come in, in terms of pandemic, engaging the community. And so we're just kind of making sure that our eyes are dotted and our T's are crossed when we do that engagement. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. Um, and I know Brendan's waiting for this question. I, I know he's already ready. Eight Days of Hope.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, you know, uh, I, I'm going to, a, as, uh, we discussed last year, uh, Councilmember during the annual action plan, uh, meeting, uh, Director Mestry, um, has been the point of contact. He's had very recent conversations, uh, with, uh, Eight Days of Hope. So he is, he is ready to go, uh, into that and answer that question for you.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, thank you, Brendan, for punning that off.
Yeah, did, like that, like that?
You know.
Shuffle out of here now.
No. Councilman, um, I know you have a great deal of interest, being that Eight Days of Hope Headquarters is in your district. In fact, I actually had a conversation with, um, Mr. Tabor, actually today. And so we've been actually making sure that those lines of communications are open. Um, he does plan, as you know, plan to do something this summer. It's going to be in the Massa District.
Okay.
Um, and I don't want to steal the, the Councilman's thunder there. Um, the city will be supportive. The approach that we have taken, and I think with, um, Brendan's approach here, is that if you're going to be here in terms of funding, but not only that, you're there, what else can we do to assist? And so if you're identifying homes, maybe there, what are other infrastructure projects that we can do within that neighborhood? What are other, maybe clean sweeps or trimming trees and all of that? So we're just not concentrating on the individual homes. We're trying to concentrate on the neighborhoods. And so, um, and Director Mahaffey will talk about, it's a, it's a, it's a neighborhood approach, it's a strategy approach. Um, and we understand that within council districts, we have neighborhoods, and so that's what we're trying to build. Um, again, I spoke with him today. I expressed to him any other kind of needs that you have regarding funding, or not even the, that there's resources. Um, they're using inspections, um, Department of Public Works. My office is going to be involved as well as Councilman's office as well. Um, and so we are fully supportive. The lines of communication between Eight Days of Hope and Administration is open, just as much as it is open with your office as well. And so that door will, um, continue to, to keep open too.
Well, well, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that, um, uh, because I'm just, you know, Eight Days of Hope was a huge, huge hope to, and, you know, the folks in my district. And as much as we can assist them, no matter what district they're in, there's just, they're going to be helping citizens and residents in the city of Buffalo. So no matter what district, I want to advocate for them. I, I wish they were back in university, but wherever, um, they're going to help residents in the city of Buffalo. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that you're going to be making that happen. Um, next question, I don't know if this is for Hope or for Brendan. Um, I noticed that we had five million dollars planned for sale of real estate, and just wanted to get a clear picture on, is that a real number? I know before in the past, we had questions on that. Just want to get your viewpoint on that number.
Um, well, it's a, it's a great, good time. Uh, this month, um, alone, we're expecting, uh, closings in the neighborhood of two point two, two point two million. Um, so again, you don't see it in the budget before you right now. A, a lot of what we do is we try to, you know, a lot of these closings happen around springtime as well. I, I should have had the number where we stand right now, but I can tell you that this month, we're expecting two point two. Um, so we, with that number is, uh, you know, I, we're pretty comfortable with that number. But the full number of five, the full number of five.
So, so, but that's going to go for, if you're finishing it this month, that's going to be for this fiscal year, not the next one, right?
That's, that's correct. I'm sorry, I thought you were asking about this fiscal year.
No, well, the, the, yes, Commissioner.
The five million, I believe you're looking at, is the In-Rem sale? Remember, we changed it a little bit differently this year or last year, where the city takes ownership of the properties, and then does the In-Rem sale, and then the surplus comes to the city.
Okay, that's not, is, but that's in the real estate line, right? Isn't that in the real estate line?
Is. Oh, the real estate, I believe, only had around eight hundred thousand? Yes. So the real estate had three hundred and fifty thousand for this year, and In-Rem was, um, five hundred and, five point five million.
Okay. Can you all give us the page numbers for the Councilmembers who are trying to find? But where are you getting it from?
They got on my tabs.
I'm sorry, we, did somebody say a number?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six. Yeah, I'm look, okay, I'm looking at the miscellaneous revenues, and it has five point five million. And it says, "Sell of land and equipment," sell of land building equipment.
In-Rem.
That's In-Rem, okay.
So we did not do one this year, and the expectation, there would be, some of that would roll into next year.
Okay. So, so that's not in real estate? That's just under miscellaneous revenues?
Right, next general decision.
Sell of In-Rem, they have the five million.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my mic was open. We, we were finding it. You finished, Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Thank you all.
And I'm sorry, my mic was open up. So the five million, uh, so we are, let me ask this way, we are having an In-Rem, Rem sale this year?
Not in the current year. It had been decided not to do it in the current year, as far as I know.
Correct, next year.
So this number is for next year.
Right, so next October, there will be an In-Rem that we're expecting five million.
Right, if you look on, um, under eighteen nineteen, uh, revenue from that year was three point nine. So the anticipation for next year, you know, since we're skipping a year, you're going to have a compound. You know, the current year houses plus next year.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, if, if anything comes up short, that will, just because hopefully so many people won't lose their properties. Um, and since we are, and I, I'll, I'll save this for the, I'll save it for another department on the In-Rem. Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt?
Yeah, okay, Commissioner, okay, you said that's for next year. That, that wouldn't be in this fiscal year then, right? If we're talking about next year. So is that, is that, that five point five million then isn't a good number then, right? If it's going to be, you're talking about having the In-Rem next October, that wouldn't be this, this not going to be this upcoming October, so that five point five million, how do you realize that?
Upcoming October, which is next year's budget. Our budget starts on July one.
Right, but you were saying that we're not going to have the In-Rem this year, so I'm, I was thinking that you're saying you're not going to have one in October.
Oh, I think it's this, this whole year.
Okay, so, so we're talking about this upcoming October is going to happen, okay.
Or maybe both till springtime.
Okay.
So Commissioner, and, and, uh, I think we all had, well, a few of us had that, um, trying to figure that out, because I, I did mean in this year, twenty twenty-one. Does the auction, well, yeah, it could be moved to spring, you're saying?
Correct.
So that, uh, so I'm glad to hear that, uh, because one of the resolutions that we're writing right now is to, uh, request that it be moved down further. Um, and the reason is because so many people have suffered during this pandemic, um, and especially financially. So I think the more that we could move that out, so that people have a chance to recover, uh, would be important. Um, and, and I don't know if there's a question for you, or if you want me to save this for taxation. Right now, the, or bring it to workshop, the amount that a person would have to be behind for their property to go into In-Rem, do, uh, do you know that off the top of your head, or do you want me to save that?
I believe it's two hundred dollars. I, no, for, I checked with Jay. I'm sorry, I wouldn't want to give you the wrong.
All right, I'll check with Jay, because I'm, I'm concerned about, uh, this year and, um, the amount of people who have lost their jobs and maybe behind on city bills, um, and them losing, uh, probably their greatest asset, uh, during a pandemic. If it were moved, who has to make the decision, um, to delay, to schedule it in the spring and not, um, this fall?
That would be a discussion between the Law Department, Assessment, and the Mayor's Office.
Okay, so the, the, I, I don't know if I have a chance to file that resolution before next council meeting, but just to let you know that at least this one council member feels strongly that we should not hold an In-Rem auction this October. Um, and, uh, so I'll just put that out there and put it on the record, and then officially, uh, have the council make a decision on supporting that.
Council President.
Council, uh, Council, uh, Council President Protem Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President. Just a question, and I don't have any problem with the concept or the thought of moving the In-Rem out a little bit. But to Commissioner Estridge, anyone else who can answer this? When we typically hold, um, the In-Rem in October, how long does it take us to realize, uh, the return on that activity? Because if we're going to hold it in the spring, I'd want to make sure that it lands within next year's fiscal year, and it doesn't end up coming in after the end of June, and then that five point five is not a realistic number. So what would the typical turnaround time be on the holding of the auction until we see the proceeds from that activity?
Um, the bulk of the proceeds, I would say, come in in the first three months. Then there are some that probably would take up to six.
Okay. And is that, that money that would come in, obviously, when we're closing up our fiscal year, we take, I think it's thirty, sixty days before we reconcile everything. Would we have that time to do that? Would that fall into that timeline as well?
Yes, if the, uh, proceeds came in during that timeframe, they would put it back into the prior fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good question. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Wyatt?
I just wanted, Commissioner, is, is the, um, In-Rem pass due based on the amount or based on years?
I thought about that after I answered. The taxes are based on the year, user fee is the amount.
Okay. So, so the user fee, you can go into foreclosure on the amount? If not, depending on the year, it's just the amount?
Correct. Taxes are the, Jay can clarify, if it's two years or one year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Wingo?
Just a quick question, uh, something that we didn't cover. How many of these In-Rem sales are disputed?
Not many.
Too many.
Less than a dozen.
Uh, but, again, the Law Department is probably the best to, to answer that. I mean, we, we do come across it. I won't say it's uncommon, but it's not, uh, certainly not a majority, you know, certainly, yeah, I don't know, under five percent. Well, yeah, I guess that's something we can save for workshops then next week. We can get that information. That'd be good. Thank you.
So, uh, we want to make sure, uh, Chief of Staff, that we put that on the list. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, as Brendan said, he was going to shuffle right on out. Thank you all. We really appreciate you.
Um, thank you.
Okay, the next department to come before us will be Permits and Inspections. Commissioner Commerford with us, uh, and permits and inspections, and thank you all for being so efficient and everybody getting in and out, uh, that, uh, we might, uh, be able to conduct these hearings. Um, Commissioner Commerford, can you tell us who's with you today?
Sure, uh, we have, uh, Deputy Commissioner Lou Petrucci, we have, uh, what is, uh, our hand mix? Part of our, uh, budget team, uh, Judy Porto, uh, head of license, uh, licenses. We have Assistant Director Tom Brodfour also with us. So with that, you want me to start, uh?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay, the, the Department of Permits and Inspections continues its policy of aggressive code enforcement, including demolitions, of which we are certainly now on the downside. Ticketing, letters of violation, and we've been performing court action, uh, since it reopened remotely. Hopefully, it'll be reopening soon by the summer, uh, actually in person, but we'll, we'll wait and see about that. Um, two thousand twenty, obviously, was a bad year. The good news is the, the revenues continue to come in, construction permits and plans are at an, almost at an all-time high, including rental reg. So, uh, anything we suffered last year, we're, uh, making up for this year, there's, there's an inordinate amount of plans being, uh, reviewed, um, and construction continues, it's really good news. Uh, uh, we were a little nervous about what might happen as the, uh, as COVID continued into this year, but we are really busy in the permit and licenses, license offices. Um, I, I will say this, thank God for electronic plan review, because we were probably getting probably thirty percent before COVID of our electronic plan review, uh, submissions. It, it probably went up to ninety-five percent because people had to, uh, send them in, they could not see us personally. So it's a good thing we had that like electronic plan review, because it really helped us immensely of continuing to be able to review plans, uh, in a, in a, a timely fashion. Um, you know, things are, are down a little, property inspections were down, uh, court cases were, uh, were down because we didn't have court. We did continue to write tickets, uh, licenses were down, but we're starting to, uh, get license, uh, um, revenue back in. Um, and we, as I said, we're doing a lot of property, uh, ticketing. Um, we've also continued to be aggressive in, in lead abatement inspections with Mike Ramos and, uh, and our two lead certified inspectors, and we're gonna put more on, uh, later in the summer. And if Lou can expand on that, uh, later on, if you need him to. Um, but again, uh, the, the electronic plan review has been a, has been a godsend for us. We've, we've continued classroom construction, uh, instruction for all our inspectors, we do it on an annual basis, and we just finished up, uh, a couple of weeks ago with that. Um, we continue to, the implementation that the mayor started last year, the Get Tough Inspection Program on all historic and commercial structures. Hanson eleven is finally up and running, in conjunction with our new laptops that our inspectors are gonna be getting very soon. More, more work will be done in the field because of easier access to electronic information, they don't have to go back into the office to access the information. And as I said before, permit licenses and rental reg revenues are strong despite the pandemic that we've experienced in the last year. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, um, Commissioner, um, are there any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Wyatt? You're on mute.
Thank you, um, Commissioner, first I wanna thank you and your team, um, I think of all the different departments, I've probably interacted with yours, um, the most during this COVID. And I just wanna say personally, Judy, Lou, Vince, Tom have been exceptional. Um, especially as you all know the situation we just dealt with, as far as Compass House. Um, we, you, you, because of your efforts, it assisted us in really getting, uh, results for the, the community. And again, I can't thank you enough, um, Vince has been working with us, um, as well with Lou, um, every year regarding our license renewal, which again, I think the deli stores in the University District are run, um, exceptionally well because of your involvement, the community, our, uh, E District Police Chief. Um, I just can't commend you all enough, um, and actually, when I think about the revenue sources, yours is probably one I'm less skeptical about. So, um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate what you all do and the interaction that you do this, as far as helping at least my district in trying to get things done and making sure that we deliver for the residents, even as it comes deals with inspections, I know that sometimes we don't wanna go out there. I think I try to tell the residents, you know, let's try to have a conversation with a resident before we send inspections and permits on them. I think that's more than fair, I mean, we don't wanna start penalizing people unfairly in the midst of a pandemic, because we know that there's a lot of issues going on, but your, your team seems to be doing a fantastic job. And again, I wanna commend you and thank you all for your efforts during the mid, in the midst of the pandemic.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any others? Uh, Councilmember Glenn Beckhams, I apologize.
Oh, thank you, uh, Mr. President, I wanna echo the comments made by, uh, Councilmember Wyatt. Um, I'd probably drive all of the commissioners crazy because I have them all on speed dial, um, and I get Commerford, Commissioner Commerford on a regular basis. And poor, uh, Tom Brodfour lives in my neighborhood, and so it seems like at least once a week on his way home, he's gotta stop at something in one four two oh seven in the North Councilmanic District. Um, Commissioner, I hope that you let him leave at least fifteen minutes early so he can do that.
Always.
Mad at me, but, uh, I just wanna say that of all the departments in City Hall, I think that the inspections Department is the most important in a proactive sort of a way. Um, you know, the police, the fire, they're coming after there's already a problem. Um, you know, the inspections Department can stop a problem from occurring, you know, something that police and fire and other departments are not really able to, sanitation, et cetera. Um, so I wanna just say that, you know, I'm continuing to support the inspections Department. Um, I appreciate all the hard work that they do, um, you know, Sanchez and Soto, and now I think Quinn is in my district, um, you know, they've done a great job. And I'm very appreciative of them, um, and, uh, I'm gonna continue, Commissioner, to, uh, uh, send you messages on a regular basis because I'm out to getting my, uh, you know, chubby cheeks out on my bicycle and on my walks through the neighborhood. So he always hears from me, but, uh, you know, I just wanna say thank you to the whole department.
Yeah, I've noticed an uptick in your texts, so I know you're out on that bike, Councilman, and, uh, I'm open for business all night, so text me anytime.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Noel Kowski?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, there is actually a line of revenue that is going up, but for a good reason, and that's lead inspections. And, uh, can Deputy Commissioner, uh, Lou Petrucci, can I just, uh, you know, talk to us and why that there will be?
Thank you, Councilmember, I know this has been, uh, one of your, uh, topics of interest and advocacy. Uh, what the Department of Permits and Inspections is gonna take the next step in our proactive rental inspection. So the proactive rental inspections are going to be inspections of non-owner occupied singles and doubles in the city of Buffalo. So presently, there's about twenty-one thousand and change across the city of Buffalo, we are going to do this over a six-year period. Our key is to try and educate the public as to what we're going to look when we're going, what we're going to expect and look for during these inspections. Uh, they're not intended to be gotcha inspections, but they are intended to improve the quality of housing for all of the residents of the city of Buffalo. Uh, lead is one of the primary focuses, but not exclusively, we'll make sure that they have all the basics, that not only just the, the lead type of factors, because that does disproportionately impact many of our residents, but also things, smoke detectors and exiting features and CO detectors, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we've, we have a plan, uh, we are, uh, during the summer, we've, we've selected four census tracts for which we've also, uh, secured a, a lead reduction grant, so there'll be actually dollars involved, uh, for these four, within these four census tracts. So we are, we are, uh, working out the final details, the exact date, uh, but then we'll be doing outreach to the community before we go out there. We're going to tell them what we're going to, we're going to implement a scheduling platform and a few other things, uh, to get the feedback, to let people know we're going to try and make it easy and convenient for them, but more importantly, to get into the interior of these units and to, um, make them better for everybody.
Thank you very much, um, you know, the Inspection Department has done an incredible job when, when tackling this on, and I look forward to, you know, the insertion of my office, you know, helping you lead those efforts. Who the heights of codes are in Fillmore and one of them in Niagara, so anything you guys need from us, um, you know, we're here for you guys, but I just really wanna thank and commend you.
Any, anyone else? Councilmember Wyatt?
Um, Commissioner, I just wanted to ask, so I know that it's been some years that you used to do the inspections in Heights with UB. Are, are we gonna be back to doing that? Because I know that I've gotten some complaints about, from students about some of the issues. Um, is that something that's back on the table possibly?
Absolutely, we actually, um, uh, earlier in the year, didn't we, Tom, is there, do you want, did you wanna sentence?
Um, I know that we have spoke with Rob Mayer just recently, and he has brought up, uh, an association with the University of Buffalo, tentatively, possibly this summer, but we don't have any confirmed date. Uh, the, it was probably almost a year ago when we did our last student housing inspections, um, with the, in cooperate, or with the University of Buffalo.
Okay.
Yeah.
We did go out, though.
We, we did do, we did do some on a limited basis, but not the large kind of proactive Saturday inspection that we've done in the past. Uh, Councilmember, though, we always felt that those were highly effective for everybody, uh, they worked out very well for students, for the residents, uh, but also people got, because they're Saturday afternoon. You got to see the inspectors and talk to them and tell them what the neighborhood concerns were.
Okay, yeah, we, I have a meeting planned with Tess Morrissey from the university, and I'm gonna speak to her about that, because, um, again, I, I agree, they've been effective and it protects students, um, you know, we still have some landlords who aren't very responsible and still try to do little tricky things, um, and put in short, the youth, the, uh, students at risk. Um, so I'll definitely touch base with her and hopefully that, that can spearhead, um, the effort, because I think it was highly effective, thank you.
Yeah, we, we can have a meeting in, in August, Councilman, and we can, uh, and, and we can take care of that for you, we can sentence, but we, I'd love to do it again, very effective program.
Yes, uh, Commissioner, whatever you can do to make that happen, if you want me to talk to Mr. Morrissey or you have the connections, please do, because I, like I said, I got a couple of complaints from some students and some neighbors. And, um, again, we, we need to get these folks back on notice that, um, we're not gonna allow you to put those students at risk.
Okay, we're gonna do it.
Thank you.
Commissioner, just, uh, quickly, before I lose this train of thought, um, we talked earlier with the Department of Public Works about, uh, street cuts. Uh, when, um, the plumbers and all the folks go into the streets, um, and, uh, my concern is they are not coming back to finish that job up. Leaving the residents with, as you know, the, then the, uh, street imperfections oftentimes on new streets. Some of the players, some of the performers who are doing it, are doing it over and over and over, then they still come and pull a new permit. Um, I know that, uh, uh, Tom Finn's office said that they were, uh, that they will begin working with your office, because I'd like to see some of the, uh, a clear message sent out. Um, but I know you, you, you wouldn't know if they don't tell you about a bad player, are you, are you aware of these, um, problems?
Council, Council President, we are aware of some of them, when, when we do have them, our plumbing board brings them in, and they can lose their, they can have their license suspended for six months. Usually when we cite them, they do them because they don't wanna come back in and they don't wanna lose their license. So if we get any complaints at all, we can take them before our plumbing board, and usually they don't do it again, but, uh, they have done it before, because I've gone over where they, or they haven't, uh, covered it, uh, properly. So, yeah, if, if we get any complaints, we'll go after them with the plumbing board.
And I know we have two years, so I'm trying to, um, uh, encourage, uh, DPW to, uh, come up with some type of process so we don't have to chase them, they have to chase us, so that once, if we know they have two years to, uh, fix that, which is a long time, a very long time. Uh, um, it's two years, right, or we have two years where we can go back to them?
When they, when they do a demolition, they're supposed to cover that up as far as we're concerned immediately, so I don't know what, how Public Works, we have talked to Public Works about this before. I would rather go after the plumber as soon as they, as soon as the job is completed.
So do they have a timeframe, I know in the winter, they have, what I'm told, they have to use concrete because the blacktop won't stick. So do they have a timeline of how, um, fast they're to complete that job?
Well, yeah, since they're supposed, the, that's where, um, uh, Mr. Council President, that's where the, primarily, the majority of the problems occur, is that either they have a large volume and they delay and defer until such time as the black fault company or the, the asphalt plant closes down. Or, uh, they can't effectively use concrete without adding so much additives that it's not worth it, or they have to cover, they just can't do it at that time of year. So then they have to go back the next spring, and then we're chasing after them to do, complete the former jobs while they're still wanting to, to do more jobs. So when they say two years, it generally means like two construction seasons, which can start in twenty twenty, may spill over to twenty twenty-one. Uh, but yes, we, uh, we have, I'm aware of one over, I know on Fillmore Avenue that we're chasing the, uh, plumbing contractor after right now, that's been a problem for a long time. Uh, I know that there's been a couple of other ones out there, but we do try to work, uh, that interplay between Public Works and ourselves. They're supposed to do it as quickly as they can in a timely manner, um, they're supposed to do it before they leave the job, the problem is that oftentimes it's weather related.
So the timely manner part, and, and I, I get it in the winter, I totally understand, I mean, it, it's, you know, it, it is what it is. But the timely manner, right now, do they have, I mean, is there a six-month window, because it seemed like within six months, the weather pattern in most cases, or seven months at the most, will have changed to be able to give them an opportunity to come back out and fix that street. We have one right now on Mulberry that honestly, I could put my whole foot in, and it just keeps going further down, and I know we have, uh, sinkholes, a different type of base in the fruit belt. But it's just, it's growing over this city horribly, and they're not coming back, and they're going on to new jobs, then they get a new permit. I, I think we should do it the opposite way, that they have to come back with some type of proof, um, and evidence that they have, uh, closed out certain cases and then, uh, be able to get, not, not one by one, because I know they go from one house to another house, but within a certain timeframe, if they haven't come back, then no more license until you prove that you have fixed these folks' street.
Yeah, we, we can get a meeting with, uh, our, our Chief Plumbing Inspector, Tony Ando, and, uh, Public Works, because I, they, if, if, as soon as the weather breaks, they should be back to, to remediate that problem, so there's no excuse for a Council President, but we'll get it, we'll get a meeting together, could you give us that address on Mulberry too, please?
Yeah, I, I'll take a picture of it and, uh, send it over to you, but it's just so many all over the city, and that's why I'd like to see some type of, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, where we, where it makes them come back to us, because after they did North Hampton last year, the year before last, three, and plumbing happens, uh, we can't stop it. Uh, but they didn't come back until I found the people and then they came back, um, and most, uh, residents have no idea that these contractors are supposed to come back and fix their street.
The most effective thing is to hold the license over their head, and that's what the plumbing board's for, and I, I, we'll talk to Tony Ando about it, uh, Council President.
And can you also, when you have a chance, send out something and remind the plumbers? And, um, and, and give them the, what, what could happen if they don't go back this summer and fix those streets, I think that may encourage some?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get a list from Tony Ando tomorrow, uh, uh, and I'll get a list from our demo contractors and, and we'll send it out to them right away.
Thank you, and I, I, along with, as some of my colleagues have said, your department does a fantastic job in responding, um, to council members, and not just to council members in general, but to the public. And I know with housing court being closed, that it, it can be a little tough. There was my la, my last, well, I wanted to compliment you. My last question, there was an article in the paper this last week about a not-for-profit developer who has two houses that they wanted to demolish. In the article, they said that they're not charging rent for one of them because the house is not habitable. So the question I have, and I know that inspections goes out, and I feel for the tenant. I went by the house that day that I saw the article. The tenant came out, talked about how big the rats were that were coming into the house. When, when the landlord says the house is not habitable, that means, I mean, people have to move out and they're out with nothing. What happens in the case of that landlord then?
We have two things, Council President. First would be that if the place is unhabitable, we try to partner them with one of our various rehousing agencies that are out there. There are a variety of them, depending upon what the family situation is, individual or family, what, what, what's the best place for them to be. Second thing, though, if it's unhabitable and they can't occupy it, then there's a variety of, depending on the, the number and nature of violations, we would take them to housing court. Even though housing, housing court is operating, we've been trying to prioritize our housing courts. Once it's short of housing court, one of the powers that we do have is that if the property is vacant, then we can tell somebody that they can't reoccupy it until it's reinspected. If however, in order for it to become vacated, then we have to go before the judge and to ask for an order to vacate. A lot of it comes down to the warrant of habitability, all those different, warrant of habitability is a fancy way of saying, all those different factors that make someplace the, or has the ability to be lived in. So, and we routinely will take people for court, we will prioritize those. Judge has been very good about entertaining orders to vacate prior to the court case being served if, if the house is in that poor of condition. So if we haven't been able to serve them formally, but that we still feel there's an, an order is required, the judge would entertain that in time, like a pre-trial hearing type of motion or, or situation where we could go before Judge Carney and ask him for those things. And we have to ask why. You know, Your Honor, there's no water, there's rats as big as cats. Your Honor, the, the health department has a problem. There's no sewer, there's no furnace, whatever it may be. We can go and ask for something along those lines. And then we follow up with the placement with two-on-one in one of these housing agencies or rehousing agency.
Yeah, I think the tough part is, you know, then the people end up out on the street. And then, you know, they, they're just out there. And, and that's my fear and that's why I won't even, well, I probably said more than I should have. Because I, I don't want this person out on the street with children. But I'm just concerned when a landlord who is also a developer says that they have property and they want more city property that is unhabitable. So that, that's a concern. So thank you for your answer.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Revere? You're on mute.
I, I don't know if Laura, the commissioner, can answer this question. I have a staffer that's been working on the lead program for approximately a year. Currently, working with the Board of Education, Mr. Kreske, Erie County Health Department, to do lead testing in Buffalo Public Schools for young children. With the thought in mind that if there's a young child with lead, it could trace back to a house and perhaps to other siblings that might be at risk from lead poisoning. Pardon me. So we're trying to put this together between Health Department, the City of Buffalo, Board of Education, but we also have to work with permits and inspections in terms of once a child is identified with having lead poisoning to go back to a property. I think this would certainly add more work for your department. It would protect their siblings. Perhaps if a child is, has, does have lead poisoning, he has siblings that might be tested as well. We're still trying to get through the county health department because they feel that once a child is four years old, it's too late. However, if that child that is four years old has lead poisoning, perhaps his younger sibling might have lead poisoning and it traces back to a property. How do you feel about working with the Board of Education and the County Health Department to enhance our lead testing with regards to going back to these homes?
Funny you asked me that question, Councilmember, but I, I, I'm familiar with it. I know that we had tried to, two different scenarios. One would have been through the Buffalo Public Schools. They have a mobile health vehicle that they were trying to use. Part of the problem we had was trying to, was the, was getting nurses there and then having the information, the information transmitted back to their primary care physician if they had then, and then on to the state. Yeah, the other thing would be to have children tested in the actual schools themselves if we could identify a location. Again, using, but the personnel doing the testing was one of the things that I know that your intern had been working on to try and identify that. Yes, it would, I know that the county has raised some objections, not so much with the actual testing because Erie County has one of the highest testing rates, if not the highest test rate in the entire state. We do a very good job. The, the problem was that chain and how to get the information, identification of primary care physicians. The follow-up on our end would be part of the normal process because once the information goes to New York State Health Department, it's disseminated to Erie County Health Department and then to us. So we do have a process whereby we would respond and we do have the resources. It would be, once the child is tested, we already have a, a business practice, how we address those things. So it would not be additional work for us in that we're already doing this. It's just trying to identify a method by which we can get this done. We believe that would have value, it would add to that. It's not adding more work to us. It's increasing the amount of children that are tested and hopefully taking the proper intervention at the right juncture to eliminate any lead poisoning.
I, I agree with you, Deputy Commissioner. And I'm hopeful that Erie County and New York State Health Department would buy into this. This is proactive. We're going to be able to test children. And I think the parents would agree, they would like their childrens to be tested. And we can work with the medical community, putting together some kind of partnership, including the nurses at the schools to test young children. And once again, the city is doing more for lead testing now than ever before. And I think this only enhances what we're doing. And hopefully, we'll side on the side of caution and allow for testing in our schools. The same way we, we ask kids if they're vaccinated, we should ask if they've been tested for lead. So hopefully, we can work through some of the challenges that you mentioned and allow for schools to do the testing or the nurses to do the testing.
Yes. Councilmember, I know two things real quick because it's something close to me. I know that one thing that we worry about also is testing older children that come here as new Americans, making sure that they were tested. Second thing, that there was pending legislation to share that test, New York City is able to access the New York State Health testing data for children that have elevated blood levels. There's been legislation kicking around in Albany to share that for all school districts across the state so that districts could properly intervene and get the children the additional help they need to try and mitigate any type of lasting impact in terms of educational needs and additional help that they would need. I, I don't believe it's gone any farther. It's been kind of stuck in committee in Albany. But, but there's been, this issue's been attacked at, at a variety of different levels from a variety of different angles.
Thank you very much, Deputy.
All right, seeing none. Thank you all so very much. We'll see you in the workshops.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Thank you. The next department to come before the committee as a whole will be Admin, Finance, Policy and Urban Affairs. Welcome. Thank you. And if, want to start with introductions?
This is my team. I'll start to my right here, or my left. You're right. We have Mike Seaman, who is Director of Treasury. We have Carmen Lavallo and Joel Otempio, who work in Treasury and Collection. At the end is Mike Marcy, our Director of Legislative Affairs. Phil Sunderland, Director of Purchase. Ray Nosworthy, Associate Management Analyst. And Jessica Brown, the Director of Administration and Finance.
Okay, you all have the floor.
I kind of just wanted to go over maybe the last year. You know, it was kind of a crazy year for everybody, but, you know, we're not, kind of you were talking of different departments and how, how blunt they are. We're behind the scenes more. We're more of a support department. So we have Treasury, we have the print shop, we have the mailroom. And they kept running.
Automotive garages too.
They're, had a regular presence in City Hall throughout the past year and kept everything running on a regular basis. And we collected the money, we did printing for people, we did special signs and we got the mail out. And it's one of those things people don't think about, but it kept on moving on a regular basis. We also have the garages, at all the garages, our inventory and stores people. They provide the gasoline, they maintain the fuel pumps, and they also provide all the automotive supplies for the mechanics. The Purchasing Department, Mr. Sunderland, he's provided all the emergency. You know, on a 24-hour turnaround, we've gotten gloves, we've gotten masks, we've gotten outfits, we've gotten dividers, everything we needed to protect City Hall for our employees, for all the visitors in City Hall. We have our legislative team and they are in constant contact with our state and federal and local delegations. So we had up to the minute information on our COVID updates and the support and advocacy advocates for all our federal funding. And the Budget Team, we work with all the departments, we work with the General Fund, we work with the Enterprise Fund, and we also work with the entitlement funds. We have a person in my office that, that's all he does is work with entitlement funds and timeliness and budgeting. So we help every department at one time or another with moving money or finding money and we also help with the hiring of employees. That's kind of an overview of how we touch city in many different ways.
Is that all you do? I mean, you want some more?
I think that has everybody. I hope I didn't get anyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else from your team had anything to say before we go to the councilmembers? All righty, councilmembers, any questions for Admin? Councilmember Wyatt?
I'm mute.
Councilmember Wyatt, you're on mute.
I know. Thank you, sir. I, I think we talked about the revenues and I, I wanted to stick to that. Well, let me go to the first thing. I talked to Corporation Council about the accounts receivable. And I know every time we have this conversation is in law. And he said that, okay, it's with you all. So I know that you have a new system as far as collections and through COVID, you may not have done anything as of yet. Is that system in place as of yet?
The new company, the collection company or the?
Yeah.
Which one?
The company.
We just received the contract from law, so they're sending, we're sending it back to the company for their approval and then we'll sign it.
Okay. Councilmember, it'll take about two months for them to create the template in the system that would generate reports and taking accounts. So you're looking at two months, once the contract has gotten back to us to go live. So we got about six months of, of, of revenue that would be going to them. And we also will be transferring anything four years and younger from the other collection agency to them also. So we'll have enough to keep them real busy right from the start.
What, what is the number right now as far as receivable, total receivable? And if you don't, and, Commissioner, if you don't have it, I can, you can do it during the workshop.
I might, I might, we, we brought, okay, I got it. You're looking at approximately around 13 million? Okay. We're looking at around 22 million in outstanding that's with the current collection agency. You're looking at about 7 million that's past the statute limitation, which means they can no longer work those accounts also. We've identified what all those accounts are. A lot of that stuff is quality of life issues, commercial contracts for companies that have gone out of business. What's nice about the time we had, we were able to create reports in regards to identifying and printing out exactly which, what those dollars are. We're probably four or five years of submitting abatements to the Law Department. It's our responsibility to get them that information. We have done that. And I, I think Tim would be the one to ask the questions pertaining to that of where we stand with that. So the number substantially shrinks as you start abating these, these things. And the current, the current number, which is 3.79 million dollars, half of that dollar amount is with National Fuel, a dispute of a contract. So, and, and a big chunk of that are the commercial contracts that, again, these businesses that have gone out of business, they had city totes. You know, it's tough to go after that. So the number's really small. Once you, once you start doing those four or five years of abating some of the old stuff, the quality of life stuff is, is, is a big chunk of it. So in other words, all, all of the councilmembers here today have, have properties that they want demoed or people have walked away from them. In the meantime, you're getting calls on grass cutting, illegal things, activities are going on in the building so you board it up. All these go on to the building. So eventually the building gets demoed. Now you got a $30,000 demo and another $10,000 worth of grass cutting, garbage removal, and all these things. So you have a property there for 40 with a lot you're going to sell for, for God's sakes, $1,500 if someone's interested in it. So that's the challenge you have with quality of life issues. But with the new collection agency, I think they understand what this is and they were confident that they, they may be able to put some judgments on some of these people. But we all know they walked away from these properties. So that's what makes it difficult. And, and not only that, it's probably people that couldn't afford to keep the property up. So those are another challenge that the people that you're going after might not even have the resources to, to pay these. And that's, that's what happens year after year after year. And you get to six, seven years, now you're abating a lot of those properties that $35,000 a crack.
Well, I mean, the, the, the whole idea, I mean, from, we've been talking about this for a number of years regarding this. And I guess the point I was trying to get to is let's get to a realistic number of what's obtainable that we can get. And Mike, you just said that, you know, 7 million is probably what you have to abate for the most part, which, you know, brings us down to about 15 million. And, and then now we have a new collection agency. Hopefully they'll be able to do a little bit better job in getting this on the front end because, you know, the longer you wait, the more difficulty is going to be doing it. I worked in student loan collections and credit card collections, probably more easier than what you all are doing. You know, because someone, everyone wants to keep their credit card alive. But, but I know that through those kind, those best practices, trying to get an early start on it and trying to collect it is in the best way. So hopefully this new company, I'm going to be up, you said, in two months. And hopefully by this fall, we'll have a list that we can have voted on to abate those dollars that we know that we're not going to get. Again, just so we have a clear picture for what our finances look like, because 22 million is one number. But when you know that the percentage, the, the 7 million write-off, for the most part, and we're looking at 15, and that may even shrink depending on what the outstanding of 15 million from the 7 million is. Commissioner, I want to go back to the budget, the total amount. You know, it's a little bit scary that we've talked once from 519 million yesterday with a 6- You know, it's a little bit scary that we've talked once from 519 million yesterday with a six, last year with a $65 million hole, to 534 million this year, and not even being clear on where that money is coming from. I know that we have speculated that we can get 50 million and that it can be used in this budget, but we haven't gotten the guidance yet. So it just, again, just a little bit disconcerting that, you know, every year with this number is, has not grown. I mean, you talked about the revenue challenges. The revenue that we actually brought in last year so far was like 483 million, but we have a $534 million budget. How do you reconcile that?
Well, from the legislation that we have received, it is covering our reduction in revenues. So we feel confident it will cover from the 1920, where we had to borrow the 26 million. And we had last year's. So we have legislation will cover our lost revenues, and that's where these two numbers come from.
So we know, because again, we've heard over and over again that this is for infrastructure. I didn't hear for lost revenues. I heard infrastructure, I hear broadband, I hear lead. You know, and I know the mayor was at Capitol Hill having some conversations, and I know we have Mike Marcy in here. Have we heard anything more definitive about that, that it's loss of revenue? Because again, when we talk about loss of revenue, I'm talking about when we've had these conversations from our sales tax to the, these money that we've gotten from the state. Those numbers aren't as significant as 65 million.
Lost the question, I'm sorry. Well.
Councilmember, can you just ask straight the question so that they can answer the question?
Yeah, I just, I just said, you know, we don't have 65 million in losses, so where is the money coming from? Because the legislation doesn't say that it's losses from what we've heard.
Mike?
Language, in the, the legislation, it does, it does identify COVID losses due to, to COVID expenses.
You, you, you have a document that speaks to that?
Yeah, it's in the legislation. I can get your own.
Can you send that to us? We can talk about that in the workshop then?
Sure, absolutely.
My next question, Commissioner, is relating to our revow. The revaluation that we had last year, that resulted in what as far as the bottom line, as far as increase in tax revenue?
Well, the revow does not necessarily affect the revenue or the levy. The levy is what affects our revenues.
Okay.
So we did not increase taxes last year, if you remember, so it did not produce any increase in the levy. We didn't increase the levy, so we didn't receive any increase in property taxes.
Got you. And so we're not doing that this, this fiscal cycle?
Right. The mayor, this year also, the mayor was very concerned about homeowners and businesses, you know, being in a problem with the revenue, with their own revenues. So he didn't want to put any additional costs on them. And because we have to do the levy in the proportions, the base proportions per estate number, that's why commercial went up a little and homeowners got to go down a little bit.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you all for what you do.
All right, anyone else? Seeing no one else, thank you, thank you to your team, and we'll see you in the workshop. The next to come before us is parking. And while we are waiting for parking to come on, we can go to, because they have to empty that room out. Common Council, Tiana, are you ready? And Malcolm?
Yes, I'm ready.
All right, let's do, let's go to your department.
All right. The City Clerk budget reflects transparency, accountability, and sustainability. The focus, focus was really keeping the budget primarily the same as this current fiscal year that we're in, which is 2021. The City Clerk budget does show a slight increase based upon a 4% raise longevity and contracts that require yearly percentage increases, kind of like in one contract we have is our Minute Track system, which is our electronic filing for the council, that has roughly a yearly increase based upon what was agreed in our agreement. I am happy to report in regards to our city contracts that we have. One that's covered by my department was shredding of confidential information for all city departments. We are in a process of a new agreement that will say the city potentially, if not already, included $15,000 a year in that regard. So that's pretty much the update from me. I would have to echo a lot of the other departments. Obviously, our office has stayed a breeze through this whole pandemic. Marriage has been up, so my marriage team been really busy, as well as death has occurred. We did lose some revenue in regards to birth. However, on the flip side of things, with death being so high this year, we honestly increased our, our death revenue was increased. So I think closing out this current fiscal year, we will balance out still around the same, generally the same revenue that we have seen within the last two budget years. And then again, like I have to commend my staff, my deputies, along with all my staff members on their, you know, their dedication and hard work in regards to this pandemic. Obviously, birth still happened, death still happened, and people still want to get married, like you had suggested a long time ago, Council President. And so again, I can't speak and say that this has, all this work has been, been done by me, but just also as well as my team. So, thank you.
And I want to commend you and the team. You worked all the way through the pandemic, and you had to. We learned some things and changed some processes. Are there any processes that you have discovered that through the pandemic could make it easier for your office, like the online registration of different things that we're moving into that you might need more funding for to do that, or are you okay?
The only other funding, and I did speak to you briefly on this, is I'm looking to see some sort of kiosk. I know all nine council members have reached out to me during this pandemic from constituents trying to obtain like birth certificates or death records. So I think it's hard, because again, so many people, when they come to City Hall, it's two things. They either going to come and pay a parking ticket maybe, or come to get a birth certificate. So I think it's, it was hard when people realized, you know, I need an appointment. And then you had a lot of curveballs as far as like unemployment now requesting, in the request of a birth certificate and things like that. So the demand of the office became a little higher even in a pandemic in regard. So I think having a kiosk, something that can honestly help to ensure walk-ins and that we can still work with the limited staff that we have, but still provide the services that we were currently, you know, continuing to provide.
So can a, a person, even without a kiosk, is it possible to start looking at a system which people could request, like, let's say, a birth certificate online, they don't get it until they come here, but we already know and can let them know when we're ready for them to come?
Yes. So, and my apologies if I didn't answer your question the first time. But I have been working with MIS, Daryl Springer, on some avenues, on just stuff that we can do on our city website. In that case of till right now, we move into the electronic things. Obviously, we do know I have shared with leadership and council members that they are looking to move birth certificates electronically. It won't happen tomorrow, it will be a year or two. But I mean, one of the things that we learned greatly, and even if they talked about it, is electronic filing for death certificates. So obviously, we all know death has to happen within a 72-hour window of filing, and we were able to do that even when discussions was up on how we were going to open the office or not. So I do think overall, moving towards that electronic portion is the overall focus on, on my, with my team, along with, you know, standing the guidelines in New York State, along with, you know, working with the council. But we are looking on little windows that where we are able to have it, where it's user-friendly for the public to just go on the city website, request a birth certificate or death certificate. So we are working on that.
Thank you. Chief of Staff, and then council members, will, you have anything for Ms. Marx? Chief of Staff? I'm sorry, who says something, Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Council President. I'm just going to ask if the City Clerk could prepare for us a list. There are definitely a lot of marriage ceremonies being performed that have been performed. Let me ask you this. These are just civil ceremonies, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so 257, that is a lot of ceremony. So just to provide for us a list of who all have been performing these marriages in the clerk's office for the workshop.
All right. Chief of Staff? All right. Anybody have any questions for Chief Staff? Alrighty, Councilmember Wyatt?
Just want to say to the City Clerk and the Chief of Staff, real leadership occurs during crisis. And you all have shown exceptional leadership in help assisting the Common Council in dealing in the needs of, in the midst of a pandemic. So I just want to commend you to be able to turn around and be able to adapt to the changing environment and where we are was huge, huge. And so I just want to commend you and Tiana and Malcolm for your efforts. Tiana, I'm probably going to ask you during the workshop, because I know there was an audit situation. I'm gonna ask you where we are on that during the workshop, so if you can just have that response for me. And that's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Wyatt?
Yeah, I just want to commend, you know, I, I rarely commend people. You notice I, I sat back when everybody was having a love fest with all the departments today. I, I truly mean this, because I rarely give the kind of credit. But our central staff has done a phenomenal job in terms of technology. And even during the pandemic, the fact that we're here on Zoom and they've organized everything and the technology and the advice and the work that we asked them to do and all the research on top of that. There's just so many things they do that go unmentioned. So I just want to thank Eartha and Jim Montour and all of the staff for the great work they do. And I certainly, I appreciate it, and I'm sure many of the councilmembers do as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Wingo?
I, I'd be remiss as well. I definitely do, I would definitely be remiss if I didn't express my pleasure with how we are able to, through the midst of this entire pandemic, our offices have stayed and remained open, no services have been suspended. But, you know, they have risked their lives in the clerk's office, going down to the city, going down to City Hall at the height of the pandemic, and ensuring that folks still got their birth certificates, death certificates, and marriage licenses. So they, they did a, a great job. And again, too, just to echo David Rivera's comment a few moments ago about the love fest with the the different departments. I mean, hey, if they're doing their job, they're doing their job. And, and, and one thing I can say is that Malcolm is very responsive. When I need something from central staff, he is the reason we are able to be in this platform with this medium right now. He's the reason we have the tablets in the Common Council, we have the big screens in the Common Council, we have the new audio recording devices in the Common Council. I mean, we can go on for days about how he's improved the efficiency of the central staff. So we're pleased, I'm very pleased. And when I talk to my colleagues, we're all very pleased with how Malcolm and Jim have run the central staff department. And we are very pleased with the clerk's office and how well they've maintained the status quo as far as the expectations with our constituents still receiving all of these very delicate and very important documents. So thank you to both City Clerk and to Malcolm for all of your hard work and for the leadership that you've all had throughout this pandemic and even prior to this pandemic. So Tiana, big ups to you, and then to Malcolm, big ups to you both for doing such a great, great job. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. And again, just a testament to how efficient we're going to be operating. If we're going to be working from home, we'll be able to, instead of having those desktop units, we'll have desktops. So we, we think, we, we're grateful for the foresight of, of Mr. Eartha in making sure that we are technologically savvy and relevant in these offices. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. Thank you. I know we have the, we go back to the to the folks from the city, from the administration. I'll wait for their camera to open. All right. Thank you. While, while you all were getting seated, we just jumped ahead so we can move this meeting along. We have before us Commissioner Helfer from Parking. And Commissioner, if you could tell us if anybody's with you?
Yes, I am with my administrator for the Buffalo Traffic Violations Agency, Danielle Murgera. It's all right with you, Council President, we could do both the Department of Parking and BTVA at the same time?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon to the honorable members of the Common Council. Fiscal year 2021 has been challenging for both the Department of Parking as well as the Buffalo Traffic Violations Agency. The pandemic has caused our revenues to decrease substantially due to numerous factors in parking. In BTVA, the revenues have decreased, but proportionally, not as much as parking. Numerous studies have shown that with less cars on the street due to COVID, dangerous and fast-driving behavior has increased. The decrease in parking revenue is first and foremost the lack of cars that utilize both on- and off-street parking during the pandemic. Currently, I'm seeing the rate of cars paying to park at approximately 45% to 50% of prior year's totals. This has started to increase weekly in small amounts. We have budgeted this year accordingly and are very conservative. We're hopeful that the trend of more cars will continue to gain momentum and hopefully exceed our fiscal year 21, 22 revenue estimates. The pandemic has caused us to think differently about parking as well as how we provide customer service. With so many residents working from home, we made the temporary policy change to not enforce the nine-to-four parking regulation. This allows, this change has allowed parkers on the nine-to-four street regulations to utilize both sides for parking, which is 24 hours a day. This has resulted in a loss of revenue due to less violations, as well as it has presented challenges to the way the city delivers services. Snow plowing, garbage, big trash, street sweeping, and tree trimming are just a few of the challenges the new policy has created. We are analyzing the best practices to see if there could be a middle ground that would accomplish both adequate odd-street parking on the nine-to-four streets, as well as allow the city to continue delivering services. This may very well result in one service day a week as a potential solution to the nine-to-four in the parking areas. Our customer service has not been compromised by the pandemic. It has forced us to think and provide services differently. A lot of this is the result of our dedicated employees who come to work daily or work from home under trying circumstances. I want to personally thank them for their commitment. Some of the changes we made, for example, were utilizing our auto impound for collection of money for both towing and storage as well as fines. Historically, people always had to come to City Hall first. Now it is basically one-stop shopping due to COVID at a different location. It could not have happened without the help of Mike Seaman at Treasury, who provided a teller in the Buffalo Police Department, who has provided an officer onsite during business hours. We have also allocated one of our staff from PVB to the impound. Another example of the changes we made were in how we conduct hearings for tickets and violations when people plead not guilty. No longer do they need to come to City Hall and put themselves at risk if they don't want to due, due to fear of being exposed to COVID. We now conduct phone hearings between the hearing officers as, as well as the customer. We also encourage people to utilize our PVB inbox and communicate more by email than in person. I'm comfortable with the staffing levels of this budget, as well as the conservative revenue estimates due to the pandemic, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Just a couple of questions that I have. And the, we talked before, and we've been, I've been asking commissioners about, especially about vehicles, electric vehicles. I know your, your vehicles are moving all day, so I'm not sure if electric vehicle would fit your department right now. But have you considered electric vehicles in your department?
We have, Council President. For the most part, especially if we have to enforce in the winter on side streets, I'm not so sure that they would work with the need for four-wheel drive and what have you. But we have looked at them for the areas where it's more central business district located, where we know that the streets are plowed, because as you know, we obviously do. the streets are plowed because as you know, we obviously do the mains first and then get to the side streets and a lot of our violations are on the side streets. So I don't think electric vehicles would work there, but it is something that we are absolutely considering for the central business district in the Buffalo Niagara Medical Campus for enforcement purposes.
They do have four wheel drives now coming that are out. And I'm looking really down. I don't expect for it to be this year or next year, but so that we start to have that conversation and start to look more for the environment, but also then for the gas savings of what the city budget and I've asked for some of those numbers to come back to us in the workshops. Our garages right now, and I know we've had this discussion right now, have charging stations, but unfortunately, some people are abusing them because they just use it because they're usually in a prime space and they just leave their car there all day. And then there's not a rotation and that could be revenue generation if once that car is full, that person, just like if they're parking on the street, then they have to come and move their car so that there's a turnover. I know we talked about it, but the company that is right now providing that service, that doesn't happen. You could just plug it in and leave it.
Correct, but we tried to move them as rapidly as we can, and we do have some fast charging stations as well. And one of the two things that to answer your question that we've been looking at, I've been talking to Bill Sutherland about electric cars. We have had that discussion. But one of the things that we've also talked about in our administration is also possibly putting electrical vehicle charging stations on street, not just at the parking ramps.
Yeah, that was my next question. Because I was in a city, well, several cities where you see on street. And it could be not only a revenue generation for the city, but it provides a service for people. And as we see this market growing and it's growing so fast, I would just hope we're looking at that sooner or than later because it's an instant revenue. But it is a great service for this industry that is growing.
Yeah, I can assure you that we are looking at that as we speak.
All right, great. Thank you. That's all my questions. Any other council members? Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to just kind of dovetail off of the electric car, you know, discussion. You know, Council President, you have a and I ordered my wife an electric vehicle, which of course we swap vehicles quite frequently. And I'm curious to know whether or not if it's possible for us to have charging areas in council parking as well.
Something I will certainly
Has anyone considered putting the charging stations in council parking areas or no?
No, but that would not preclude any council member from using those stations that we have in the garage and we try to locate them conveniently. I think in the Turner ramp where the council parks, I'm not sure logistically that we would be able to do that. It's something I could certainly look at, but you know, it's a program that we are continuing to evaluate. I think the Council President alluded to the fact that this is coming fast and furious and we know that and obviously an expansion will be occurring in the ramps as as more and more people start to come back to normal and we start getting more capacity on street and off street.
Thank you, Commissioner Kevin Helfer. And also thank you for being available over the past weekend to answer the questions I had regarding your budget. You made a lot of things clear to me as to how we no longer have to go to the state for, well, send our revenue to the state. Thank you for your elucidation on a lot of the topics that I had with you and sending that information back to me in a comprehensive way. So I don't have any further questions, but again, you've always been very, very available. And you've always given, at least my office, the professional courtesy that will be extended to any other council member as it relates to responding to our call. So thank you very much for that. And again, thank you, Council President, for the acknowledgement.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, we'll see you in the workshop, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next department to come before us is MIS. And that will be Darryl Springer, and I'll bring this up when he's on since we are live to all council members. There is a hacked email coming out that has my name. Please do not click the link. MIS has been notified.
Council President, can you just tell everybody what that email address might be so they know which one not to click?
Yes, it's in, I just sent out an email to everybody. So it's in your email.
Is it just the councilmembers or does it should the public know also?
No, I mean, I'm just saying it to the council members because the emails went to the council members.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in there and it starts with a P. You see something from Darius Priggin from a do not, I mean, if you open it, just don't click the link. Good to have MIS. And if you just let the public know who's in the room.
Good afternoon. This is Darryl Springer, the Deputy Commissioner and Acting CIO for MIS.
All right.
I'll be
just me.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Over the past years, a year, MIS has faced many challenges due to the pandemic. We have also adhered to the reduction in staff at City Hall operating sixty percent, excuse me, operating sixty percent from home. The MIS staff adapted to this new environment very quickly. And we were able to accomplish the following excuse me, the following achievements. We executed a continuity plan that allowed essential employees to either work from home in the office or a hybrid of both. We procured and implemented new VPN servers for secure connectivity. We implemented several cloud applications, including Office three sixty-five and Team Dynamics. We made upgrades on our on premise infrastructure and procured over three hundred new devices throughout the city enterprise. In the twenty twenty-one year for this budget, we are focusing on five different areas. One being data management, leveraging data analytics and analytical software to make data-driven decisions and to continue to publish additional data sets on open data Buffalo. Infrastructure and applications. Continue to upgrade our secure, our physical infrastructure. Replacement of the city WAN. Diversifying our infrastructure by procuring additional cloud services, including fast software as a solution applications. Cybersecurity. In that sector, we will be securing our physical and cloud investments with a secure access service edge solution or SASE. Education. We'll be continuing end user application training and security training to protect our investments. Also, we have put in the budget expanded workforce. Continuing to modernize our technology titles, adding new titles such as IT Specialist One and System Security Analyst and adding additional positions and filling positions to meet anticipated capacity needs of the upcoming year. As MIS continues its strategy of diverse and secure infrastructure for City of Buffalo's techno- technology portfolio. That is the strategy for the next upcoming year for twenty twenty-one. And I welcome any questions from the council.
Oh. Is that doing? Councilmembers, any questions for MIS? I don't see one, but my office contacted your office today about, while we're talking about security, a email, and we've had several hacks, well, not hacks, that's probably the wrong word, where names of different people in City Hall are in the subject line as if it's coming from them. One went out today to all council members. And it basically said that I needed their assistance with something and to click a link. If accounts, if and people do it in error, does that put our system up? Maybe, I'm not sure if I should be asking this in a public space. I have some questions on security I won't ask in this space because I don't think that that's the right place. But let me say it the other way. But when that happens, do all of the employees of City Buffalo know to contact MIS right away? Because you can block that email address, correct? Or no? From spending more?
That's correct, Council President. All city employees do know to contact our department right away. When they do, we do go through a process. But I would like to discuss that maybe further in private session rather than on the public, on the public channel. But yes, that is rolled into the education that we're going to be doing for the next fiscal year for end user training and security training.
I would just say probably, and you could check with law, in the workshops, we may need to go into an executive session so that we can discuss the security of our systems. And we could check with law to make sure that that is allowable. But I would imagine that it is, but there are questions that council members have about our systems. So I think we should be prepared for that discussion next week.
Yeah, I'll be sure to reach out to law to make sure that that's something we can accommodate. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, we'll see you in the workshops.
Great. Thank you.
And next, we have three more so that the public knows that we will be hearing from Assessment and Taxation next. After Assessment and Taxation, we will hear from Audit and Control. And then we will hear from labor unions in that order. So we're prepared now for Assessment and Taxation. All right, nope, where's it? You're moving on my screen, so you disappeared. I'm sorry. All right, we have Assessment and Taxation. Commissioners, show, who do you have with you? Is it just you?
It's just me, myself and I.
All right, wow. Any opening statements or anything you'd like to tell the council about your budget?
Just a general statement. As you know, our department consists of assessment, taxation and exemptions. The budget submitted continues to be a lean budget with a modest increase. But as you know, in recent years, the budget continues to focus on opportunities promote equity within our assessment role, promote internal efficiencies within our processes and improve customer service and make it easier to do business with our department.
Very brief statement. I think I know the answer to this. This is more for public consumption. So during this pandemic, are we at the place that we expected to be for taxes, revenue?
Yeah, actually, we've been collecting right on par. You know, we send out annual delinquency notices. We're down three thousand from the average year. So revenues have been realized. You know, I think both with the implementation of the new tax bill. You know, and just the ability to pay with taxes being so low, I think, you know, people in general paid on time and have been doing so.
I'm sorry, thank you. Talked earlier about in RIM and the amount of, I mean, and the timing of M-RIM. There'll be a resolution being filed tomorrow that is going to request your office not to hold the in RIM in October because of the pandemic and the economic hardship to so many folks. Do you see more houses right now possibly in the in RIM than we've seen in the past? Or are we on par?
Well, first of all, we're currently foreclosing on two thousand eighteen. So they've had exemplary amount of time to pay down. So we started off with around eighty-five hundred properties. We're about fourteen hundred right now. That's outside of, you know, having our court order payment program. Numerous homeowners, about fifty percent typically in a normal year, take advantage of that payment plan opportunity that we provide, which is a two-year court order payment plan to remove their houses from foreclosure. So you know, I think that we're, if not on par, we're definitely below where we normally, just because of the sheer amount of time that people have and have had for foreclosure. Not to mention that, you know, with federal and state, you know, there continues to be stays through executive orders or presidential orders, you know, whatever, what have you that prevent us from foreclosing and every other municipality, you know, within New York State and the country. So those are constantly being monitored, constantly being extended, and we'll follow those as well.
Yeah, and I understand that it's from two thousand eighteen. The problem that I'm hearing about, especially landlords, is that because they could not evict, many of them had people who wouldn't go get the program, programming help that they could have gotten and who just didn't pay rent. And so now you have landlords who not getting rent who have back things. And I know it's been over time, but every landlord is not wealthy or in a place possibly to pay. So that's just a heads up that, and it hasn't even been voted on by the council, but it will go before the council and then vote up or down to request your office. What we were told is that even if it was moved to the spring, that those revenues could book for this budget. So that was a concern. And we heard earlier that they could. So just wanted to give you a heads up that that resolution would be filed tomorrow. The amount of back taxes or what is owed to the city before a house is considered for in RIM, what is that amount? Do you know?
It's two hundred dollars across the board. So, you know, traditionally associated with user fee just because taxes and assessed values are so high. But there are cases where, you know, it could be a vacant lot, you know, set very low that with a combination of taxes and sewer, it could take three, four, five years to hit that threshold. So you know, it's two hundred dollars, but you see it more frequently in the user fee than you do in taxes. But it's two hundred dollars across the board.
So for two hundred dollars of user fee, they could potentially lose their house.
Correct, that's the threshold.
All right. And obviously, we voted on that. I think that that needs to be revisited. That's for us to do, not for you. But I just wanted to make sure as we revisit it that I was correct. That is two hundred dollars where it could begin that process. When people lose their houses to in RIM and we sell the house and there is an overpayment, how are those people notified that they potentially could have money in the city?
Well, it depends on what in RIM you're inquiring about. So I'll just break it up in two pieces. One is prior to M-RIM fifty-three, the city followed a standard process of submitting all surpluses to Erie County. Erie County took out their money, notified whoever had to. They had to think up to two years to grab their surplus. After that, it was distributed to New York State and then left there in perpetuity until New York State decided just to, you know, write it off and collect it as their own. But in M-RIM fifty-three, we began taking ownership of the properties, which mean all surpluses came to the city. Which mean all surpluses came to the city. Department of Law is actually who oversees the claim. It's it's actually you would submit a claim to the law department for the surplus. It's reviewed by the law department. It's a policy that was negotiated with Western New York law, a lot of public input. And it continues to be a policy today. So they have a process in place to notify that's outside of the tax office. Because that at that point in time, it goes into general revenue. And then you could submit a claim for your surplus. Which you're notified by Department of Law. And at that point in time, they could vet that process and then distribute any funds you're you're eligible for.
Oh, and I thank you for that clarification. So your office is out of it after it's sold and it's it's now. Up to law to notify. The people who've lost their house?
Yeah, essentially, what now the city of Buffalo takes ownership to the property, the city of Buffalo owns the properties that were actually auctioning off. So, you know, the. After that, you know, all the revenues don't come to the city. We do a distribution process to make sure all the back taxes, water, user fees. County, all those types of things that, you know, through any of those surpluses that come in that they're distributed properly. But as far as distribution of claims for surplus. That goes into a a law process, like I said, a legal policy that was negotiated. Two years ago at the beginning of the in RIM auction fifty three in RIM.
How long now that the city is taking ownership of those properties? How long does a person have to claim their surplus, the surplus funds?
Off the top of my head and and I'm not familiar. I think it was two to three years. I I don't know. I know there was a lot of debate about it. But I I don't have it in front of me to 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 comment on it specifically.
Can you find out and bring that to the workshop? Because I think that is very important. The my last question is, is that published somewhere? When when now that we have the funds, I don't know what the county did, and I'm glad that we did make that change that the city receives them. But. Now that the city has them. Do we have anywhere published on our website or because I'd like? As many people to receive their surplus funds. We have people who out there who don't even know. That they can receive surplus funds. And part of the problem is, of course, the last address that we probably have. For the person in many instances is the house that was auctioned. And so now correspondence, and I know several cases where this occurred, including. Next door to me, the the mail then goes to the house that they lost. And then they never are notified. Is it anywhere published? That we have these funds, surplus funds? And the names and amounts?
Well, I I can address the first part is there's an extensive search that's done for any property owner, whether or not they live in the residence or not. It's part of the vetting process for foreclosure. Matter of fact, we get calls all the time saying, why am I getting this notification? I haven't had this property in ten years. Anybody that could potentially have a lien or an interest in the property is notified of the foreclosure. And it's done through a sophisticated tracking mechanism. So one, we do do our due diligence, try to reach out and get good addresses for people. Two. You know, as far as publish of the policy. I don't know if it's on Department of Law's website. I do know that the calls that we get. We refer right to Department of Law. So they can work out those claims and and negotiate where they have to.
Yeah, thank you. It wasn't about publishing the policy. You know, you can go on the state side and see monies that the state has. For people that they may have collected from National Fuel that it is about the names. Of the persons who are eligible to receive surplus funds. And possibly the amount so that. People are able to get on. They may recognize the name and be able to contact someone to say, hey. Your mom, because a lot of these situations are people that passed on. That the family would may be eligible. But once that person is passed on, no one knows. So the question is about the publishing. Is so so right now as a council member, am I able to go to any website or? City site to see if a a property in in elicit if there's surplus funds for it?
Yeah, and and again, since it's not the assessment and taxation policy, you know, I would imagine. If there were to be such a thing, it would be orchestrated by the Department of Law. And set up on their department. I'm familiar with the searches you're talking about. New York State advertised it every other year, you know, local broadcasting networks say. Hey, does state owe you money? You go there, you type in your name. As far as I know, they don't have that type of thing. As far as I know, the policy does say that they will contact the owners. If they're eligible for any surplus. And then that would start the claims process, but. I I'm not familiar. And again, I I don't frequent. You know, laws website, nor have I had conversations with them building ever both. Database that you could search or something like that.
And thank you because if I didn't know, I'd ask them. So I'm gonna ask Council Chief of Staff. For the workshops to ask the law department to provide the council. With how much surplus money we currently are holding that should be going to families. And I don't think that that would be a confidential situation because. Any other government that owes people money, it it's public information. So I not only like to see how much the city is if they're holding anything, and I would imagine they would. Because since the new policy, we're holding the money. I'd also the B part of that would like a list of the persons. Who we owe excess funds to because there might be individual council members. Who recognize names who may be able to help those families get what is due to them and it doesn't just end up. Going to New York State and being written off and those families lose the money they deserve. Any other questions, colleagues? No other questions? Thank you very much, sir, and we look forward to seeing you in the workshops.
Thank you.
The last city department that is coming before us before the unions. Will be audit and control and they are already on. How efficient? I'm not Deputy Controller, if you want to tell us who's in the room.
Afternoon, your honorable body. And the room with me today is the City of Allen Bill Ferguson. And a city cash and debt manager, Greg Semaski.
Welcome. Any opening statements?
Yes. During the height of the pandemic, the Department of Audit and Control. Have been able to process over thirty six hundred employee payroll checks. Issue payment for over thirty eight thousand vendor invoices. Invoice over six thousand customer customers for server, I'm sorry. Invoice over six thousand customer. Invoices. Provide management to two bond sales totaling seventy four point one million. Environment for capital projects and improvements. Participate and perform an external and internal audits. While maintaining key city financial records and providing timely financial reports and guidance as needed. A couple of bullet points in regards to the current recommended budget. The number of budgeted salary positions within the Department of Audit and Control has remained the same as fiscal year twenty twenty one. The Department of Audit and Control. Year over year budget increased by seventy three thousand dollars, primarily due to annual contractual salary increases. All general expense budget line items remain the same as in fiscal year twenty twenty one. And in closing, the Department of Audit and Control will continue to protect, report and strengthen the city finances. While working to while working with the administration, the Buffalo Common Council, the BFSA. Citizens and taxpayers of the City of Buffalo. Were open to answer any questions this group, this honorable body might have for the Department of Audit and Control.
Council members? I think we talked to you so much that we get our answer, our our questions answered every two weeks. Anything pertaining to the budget though, and I don't see anything pertaining to the budget. And so you might be surprised. Today we have no questions for you. Thank you. All right, Merry Christmas. Councilmember Wingo.
Uh, no, there's no uh oh here. I mean, you guys are fine. I. I really appreciate the information that you all have provided for me. Again. Like I've been saying, I've sat down with all of the department heads. Including the Deputy Controller, Mr. Dow. And you all have been very helpful in making sure that I was able to understand. What movements were made in this budget and what all those meant. And I just really appreciate the time that you spent to ensure that this council member. Knew what this budget meant, and I really appreciate the open invitation. By Commissioner Barbara Miller Williams for all of us. To sit down with you all anytime before we get into these public forums. And have this back and forth going on so that we can understand before we get here so that we can all talk. Intelligent intelligently about this budget. Thank you again, and thank you for the acknowledgement, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Deputy Controller and your team.
Thank you.
We are now at the portion where we will hear from our labor unions. Whoever appears first is going to be the first one to be acknowledged, and I think I see Vince behind the camera. So we can start. If you'd like to, if you would just state your name for the record and who you're representing. You're muted.
Vincent Ventreska, President Buffalo Professional Firefighters, IFF Local Two Eighty Two.
All right, sir, and you have the floor.
All right. I just have a few things today. First of all, thank you so much for the time and bringing me on today. I was fortunate enough to be on this morning and listen to Commissioner Ronaldo. And so I just had a few things, of course. I don't know if they're going to be sound that great, but the bottom line is this. Let me start with the New York State Training Academy. Local Two Eighty Two is not a fan of that. We did file an improper practice charge. We believe that the training of new recruits is the specific duty of local Two Eighty Twos. I'm sorry. And the pro it's problematic because. If you have a properly staffed training bureau and you hire at a correct rate. Small class sizes, you can do training at our academy with our trained by our members. And not have to expend overtime. And so we have an unstaffed training bureau. And again, the fact remains that historically from two thousand to two thousand nine, no hiring was done. Now, again, we're in a mass hiring. During negotiations, we discussed specifically how to reduce overtime. And that kind of leads into the other portion of this is that. I told the city that if you want to curb overtime, you have to do two things, promote and hire. And so we've seen a mass hiring, but promotions are hanging out there. We filed multiple grievances. We've gone to arbitration. Promotions need to be made and they need to be made in an expedited manner. And so right now you also, just to kick back to the New York State Training Academy, because I didn't want to leave that hanging. Is that the members who went there are being poorly trained, they're working too many hours. That is also going to be an issue. And they have to come back to Buffalo and be retrained on Buffalo operations. So it's not the cost savings things that you want. And again, it's our unit member work and. That's where we are right now. And then we're lacking with promotions. Right now, we need captains and lieutenants promoted and. The city's known about the arbitration award for over a month and a half and promotions are still hanging out there. And we're just waiting. And that's how you curb overtime promotions, immediate promotions and hiring at a. Normal rate continuously every year. From now till the end of time, you should hire twenty five to forty firemen every year. Should hire, you should buy three apparatus and an SUV every year. You should do preventive maintenance on your buildings every year. So anyway. That's about all I have. I didn't want to take up too much of your time, but I more than wanted to answer questions.
Thank you, Vince. And could I have council staff to do three things for our workshop? To ask for the cost of the training academy. The the one that for New York State and then what the cost of the training academy was. When it was being done locally. Also, a list of unfilled jobs and promotions that have not taken place. I'm sorry, it was two things. So Vince will ask for that so that we can compare those numbers.
Well, I think you have to understand though, Council President, that when. They have run these academies, let's start with two thousand fifteen, you had. A hundred recruits at the academy running two platoon schedule. And because you're running such large classes, because again, we're doing a mass hiring. To catch up. You have a situation where you have to bring staff. From the line. Out to the academy to work. And those members are there for long hours and getting overtime and all the spots that they've left. Have to be replaced with members to properly staff the department.
Got it, thank you.
Why the cost is going to be, it's going to look astronomical. But again, what I'm saying is if you have a chief. A captain, four lieutenants, two firefighters at the training bureau, they can run a class of fifteen.
Vince, can you can you reduce what you're saying to writing? Just so that all the council members, some who might not be on. And may not understand why that number would be changed, I mean, be so large so we have an understanding to be a part of the record. Basically about why there would be a difference in that.
Send you an email. I mean, what do I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
You can send the email. That'll be fine and I'll distribute it to the council.
Okay, I'll send you an email on my position on that.
I appreciate it. Council members, Councilmember Golumbe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, I was going to ask sort of similar to what you put in a request with central staff. But there's one other thing. I have spoken in the past about the need for generators at each of our firehouses. I think that there's only a certain percentage, a very small percentage that actually have generators. God forbid if there was an emergency and electricity went out, we would be in some real serious trouble. I would like to ask staff. To put that in as an ask. I would hope it would be for this entire council. That we would be able to get generators for all of the firehouses in the City of Buffalo. Whether it's in this year's budget or if it's in the stimulus dollars. I think it's very, very important. I hope that we never use it. I hope we never need it. Like an insurance policy, but I think that it should be there, and I think that it's very, very important. That we make sure that all of our firehouses that are in each and every one of our districts. Have that emergency generator so that they can be open. Thank you.
Yeah, what do you want me to say?
Vince, are you finished? I know somebody was talking to you. I've had open mic all day, Vince, so don't worry.
I didn't I didn't know if there's any more questions, but. I guess there's there's two other things than I would say that we did. The union did sit and discuss this with the mayor and one of our biggest things, and I know that the City of Rochester. Just got through a grant, a water rescue boat. I think we're really playing with fire, not to use that pun, but on the waterfront. You need to have your bulk, your fire department doing water rescue. On the water during the boating season and we'd be willing to sit down and work that out and figure that out. And that right now, the craft that we're using in the the water operations either. Give us the correct equipment to do the job correctly or don't have the fire department on the water. Because we're when we send members out in the pitch black in a dinghy. It's just dangerous and and it's not going to be a good thing. And then as far as the stimulus package. The union's aware that a large portion, or you know, there is a portion that's set aside. For up to thirteen dollars an hour for essential workers who actually went to work. And so we have the entire department. And so we're preparing to send some along with the PBA, send a letter over to the city. Just make them aware that we're our understanding is that there is specific money set aside. To pay the essential workers up to twenty five thousand for the time that they spent working during the pandemic. Wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you, Vince. All right, no other questions for fire? Who else do we have on? We have Buffalo Police.
I'm gonna go then. Thank you so much, Council President.
You're welcome to hang out. It's really exciting stuff.
Good afternoon, everybody. Just very, very briefly. I just looked at the numbers on the on the budget and I know. Most of you, most of you guys are aware that, you know, we're going to be headed towards arbitration. And my my again, hope was that there was money set aside for an anticipated award. You know, again, I I don't see that reflected in those in the worksheet, but I don't know where. You know, if money's set aside for, you know, contingency plan or what have you, but that that was my concern.
And I know who you are, but could you tell the folks who you are for the record?
I'm I'm sorry, John Evans with the Buffalo PBA.
Okay, and that's the only thing you have, John?
Yeah, that was it.
All right, council members, any questions for John? Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Council President Pridgen. Mr. Evans, good to see you. Of course, I'm I'm sure I'm pretty sure. You probably know. The line of questioning I'm going to bring today. Considering the article that was published into. considering the article that was published in today's paper regarding the settlements that were in our claims committee just yesterday. Hundred fifty thousand to Mr. Stone, thirty thousand to Rodriguez Howard, twenty thousand, fifteen thousand. You know, one of my colleagues has been emphatically, you know, talking about, you know, how we can change the culture. I myself, as well as several other colleagues, are concerned with how we can change the culture. My colleague specifically spoke about the officer who was directly responsible for settlements that cost the city four point five million dollars. I know that you defend your members, but at what point do you consider it to not be beneficial financially for you to continue to represent these people who have cost the city so much money and also have these checkered hats on the force?
Not, I'm actually not familiar with with what what you're talking about or these settlements. But we we defend our officers against internal, again, internal affairs charges as well as criminal charges when they do occur. As far as the corp counsel settling versus fighting these cases out, you know, that's, that's their business, that's, you know, that's, that's not our our responsibility there. I know in a lot of cases, we wish, again, from talking to officers, we wish that the city would would fight the cases out, because we don't think that, again, in some cases, that that the the juries would award, you know, that that type of money.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I can see my colleague getting visibly upset, and I don't blame him. But at what point do you consider it being enough for you to represent a person who has checkered history on the force? How much, okay, let me ask you this question, Mr. Evans. How much money has the benevolent association been on defending some of these gross allegations?
What case?
So you don't have a record at all, Mr. Evans? You you came to a budget hearing without a record of any of your finances?
This isn't a budget for the PBA, a budget hearing on the PBA's finances. This is on the cities, am I correct?
You are correct, but if you, do you have the answer to that question?
What, what's the, you're asking me how much the PBA has spent on defense?
So you know.
What year, what case?
It, last year, last fiscal year. How much money did the PBA spend on defending officers with histories of allegations of abuse?
I'll say zero. What history is of allegations? I don't know what you're talking about, you're not giving me anything.
So, okay, so, Mr. Evans, you are the president of the Police Benevolent Association. And I was clearly asking you if you have any idea how much money the PBA has spent since you've been the president of that association on defending police officers? You don't know? You have no idea? Do you even recall the last case that you defended?
Yeah, I do know the numbers. I knew that, I know the numbers annually. Is that your question? You're asking me about a specific case? A case throughout, a case including IAD? Cases that are at the DA's office, cases at the US Attorney's Office, cases at the AG's office? What, what are you asking me?
I I can see now, Mr. President, why the negotiations go the way they do with the police union. I'm done.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that the the union is here to not, I mean, what we're here for today is the budget. And so we we really can't compel the union to give information about their personal budget, because it's not a part of the city budget.
Well, the the president did make the comment that the union would like the city to take over those responsibilities. That's why I asked that question, Mr. Evans.
I, I never said that, I don't know what he's talking about.
Oh, clearly, clearly.
Okay, that, okay, we've had the questions, we've had the answers. Any other questions for the police union? Thank you very much for appearing before us and we we appreciate you taking the time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Guys, have a nice afternoon.
All right, if there are, I put up my budget book, so I believe that was the last person to be heard from. I'm going to ask the Chief of Staff or, I'm sorry, the Clerk's Office to read off the schedule of the. I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. Who's here from six fifty? Ms. Mack, are you with us? Ms. Mack? All righty, if she's not, she can send us what her in writing and I'll present it and distribute it. Will you please read off the schedule? Is there any other union on? Please, please read off the schedule.
I can read it from the clerks. We have Board of Education Public Care scheduled for Monday, May tenth, at ten AM via Zoom. And then at, we'll roll into, we'll go to workshops and then at, we'll have our following, immediately following Board of Education here. We'll go into workshops on Monday, May tenth. And then Public Care will also be on Monday, May tenth, at five PM.
All right, and then the workshops are on that same day, so everything.
All right.
So it'll be a long day for us, but we'll take care, do the people's business. Hearing nothing else, then we have a motion to recess the committee of the whole until Monday morning. Thank you, second by Councilmember Wyatt. Thank you.